Fairview Zoning Board of Appeals, June 3, 2021. First, I'd like everyone who is, doesn't have to speak right now, doesn't have an application that's coming up immediately to make sure you're on mute. I'll give you plenty of time to unmute yourself, but I want to make it easier for everyone to hear. If you could do that, it'd be very helpful and removes any interference. The, we want to state that there's a matter number two on our continued docket, 654 Tonxus Hill Road is being continued to our July hearing. So no business on that. So right now, in the executive session, I have two items on our agenda. The first is approval of the minutes from our May 6, 2021 hearing, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Who was that, Jane?
Jane.
Yeah, I thought so. Okay. Thank Jane. Is there a second?
Second.
Daphne, a second?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, bring it to a vote. All say aye, aye. Is there any opposed? No one opposed. Motion carries. The second item is approval of secretary's feeds, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Daphne. Is there a second?
Second, Jane.
Thank you, Jane. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll bring it to a vote. All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? None? Thumbs up, hands up. I had ayes. We got a lot of different ways to approve that one. So that's approved. Thank you. We'll reconvene our working session after we finish our public hearing. At that time, we'll be voting on each matter that goes forward today. Give us about five minutes before we start, just so you know, our first matter that we're going to have is 158 Fairview Avenue as the continued docket number 654 has been continued further to next month. Ready, Matt? I'll start the call at least.
Yes, we're all set and the first item is on also.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
All right, call to order, June 3, 2021, Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals. When a matter is first called, I will first announce it by the particular way it's listed on our docket for the record. When I'm done, at that point, the applicant or his or her agent, you can unmute yourself. I want everyone to stay muted unless you need to have something to say and you have something to say on that or you're presenting it. Even the board members, you know, during the, you know, hearings and applications, they're muting themselves until there's time for us to ask questions. So please do your best to do that. If I see that your mouth is moving and we're not hearing from you and we should be hearing from you, I will do my best to remind you to unmute yourself and let you know what, you know, where you last left off so you can continue on. We want to try to do our best to create a clear record, so only one person can talk at a time. I will give time for other people that are interested, time to talk, I will give time for the board members to ask questions. I'll give time for the applicant to answer all those questions. After the applicant's presentation, as I said, there may be some questions from the board. If there are no questions, I will then open it up to people that have commented, whether it's in favor or against that particular application. If there is anyone that speaks opposing that application, I will then allow the applicant or his or her agent an opportunity to address those comments that are in opposition. Just a word for some of the applicants, there may be some oppositions that have been submitted by way of email, which the board is considering. We'll do our best to let you know and those hopefully have made their way to your attention as well. And you can, what you can do is you can comment on those during your presentation if you choose to do so or I will allow you to comment them in a rebuttal just in case someone else speaks opposing your application. I will leave that to the applicant or his or her agent, your choice. Whoever's not just joined is not muted. Please make sure you're mute. The meeting is being taped and so therefore it's very important that we understand the tape and don't have interference. So if you're not speaking, presenting, answering questions or asking questions, please make sure you're on mute. Only one person can speak at a time. Anyone who does speak, I need you to give your name and address before you begin speaking. And again, that's for clarity of the record as to who is speaking at a particular point. For anyone that has comments in opposition or in favor, I reserve my right as chairman to restrict your comments if you're going too far off the point. So I please ask you to respect this board and keep to the point as to asking for a variance of the zoning regulations. Advocates and interested people can remain in attendance. We may take a short break after the completion of all the applications. And when we return, we'll be voting on each application that goes forward today. In order for your application or the applications that's at issue to be granted, you need at least four of the sitting zoning board of appeal members to vote in favor of that. If you need a super majority, if it's a simple three to two majority, and even though if it's three to two in favor, that application will be considered denied. You need at least four in favor to, in order for the application to be granted. If you cannot wait and hang around until that time, feel free to give the zoning office a call tomorrow to find out what happened on your application. However, I will state, as chairman, I've been doing this for a while now. I think it is important for the applicants and people that are interested to stay on and hear what we have to say because we will be discussing and there may be some helpful comments for the applicant or even the people that are, have a position against it to hear what we have to say. If an application for a waiver of a variance is granted, it will not be valid until it's recorded on the land records. Therefore, you need to bring or send a check in the amount of $60 made out to the town of Fairfield and bring or send it to the zoning office Wednesday or later following the meeting, this meeting, for proper recording of the notice and filing. Any waiver for regulation which involves construction, whether it's for a new dwelling, an addition or even an alteration will require an ass bill before the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy. As I stated earlier, our first matter that was on our agenda, the continued docket, and that's number two of continued docket, 654 Tonxus Hill Road, has continued to our July hearing. First matter for business that we have is on the general docket and that is number 158 Fairview Avenue, map 128, parcel 243, petition of William and Jessica Falcone for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the setback from 28 feet, proposing 22 feet, and section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 30%, proposing 21.3%. Permission to legitimize a deck constructed by previous owner, premises A zone. And I think, Mr. Seron, you're presenting this for them, correct?
That is correct.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so can I share, I haven't done WebEx. Can I share my screen with you or?
I think so. Matt, do you need to authorize that?
I do not. He should be able to do that. And if not, I can always put it up, but.
There we go.
Yep.
Okay, you can see it now, right? So this is the survey. So as you said, it's an existing deck that was constructed by the previous owner. We're asking for two variances. One of it's the rear setback, and this is an existing non-conforming lot. So that's what's created mostly our hardship on this. So the variance on the rear setback is for 28 feet. For a building, it's 30 feet. For the deck, it's 28 feet. Where the one corner of the deck and the steps are about two and a half feet into that rear setback line. And then the second variance, as you mentioned, is for coverage, which is from 20% to 21.2%, which is an increase over the 20 of approximately 96 square feet. If it was a conforming lot, we would be able to easel, we would be 100% in conformance. So we were actually, this is actually about 1,600 square feet total coverage. And in this lot, in this zone, if it was a conforming lot, we'd be allowed to have 1,875 square feet. So we feel that the variance is warranted, that our hardship is the fact that it's a non-conforming lot. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, sir. Why don't you just leave that up for now and see if there's any questions or any questions from the board from Mr. Seron? I can't see anyone.
Jane is saying yes.
Okay. I can't see anyone because the screen shares are, so I can't see you on my part. Go ahead, Jane.
What, when did you buy this house? What year?
So I'm not the owner and I'm, I can't see who's on, so I can't see if my client is on or not. But I think they bought the house several years ago.
I'm just curious, yeah, because I'm just curious how the, did the previous owner apply for a building permit to build this?
Now, our step after we, as soon as we get the variance, we then still have to go get a building permit for this.
So there was, so there's, okay, so they never got us, okay, I understand.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Mrs. Seron, can you take the screen share down?
I will do that. Just trying to figure out, I'll stop sharing. I got it. There it is. Thank you.
It's easier for me to see if there's anyone that wants to speak.
Right.
Seeing all their faces. Since there's no further question, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this particular application? 159 Fairview Avenue, 158 Fairview.
158, right.
All right. Hearing none, the hearing on 158 is now closed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Number two, 61 Harvester Road, map 47, parcel 309. Petition of Nicholas and Maureen Dofino for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4.3, to reduce the side setback for an accessory structure from 10 feet, proposing 2.1 feet. Permission to legitimize a shed premises R3 zone. And I think it's the owner that's presenting this, and I will state that we did receive a call from a neighbor, adjoining neighbor, having no opposition. So I wanted to make sure that is on the record from Mr. Marini, I believe. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. My name is Nick Dofino. I'm the owner with my wife Maureen. So yeah, we, we are asking for the variance to legitimize the shed. Reasons why, from a hardship perspective, simply no room. We have a large patio and if we move the shed out the full 10 feet, we literally just will not be able to walk or get any equipment to the backyard. Most recently, we had some electric, electrical equipment added. Unfortunately, that electrical equipment, the sub panel was put into the shed. The shed was on a bed of rocks before and able to be moved since the sub panel was installed directly into the shed, which would require a significant amount of work and money to be able to replace that. What we're trying to do is get a CO to make sure that we can refi our home and want to just make sure we went through the process correctly. We had all neighbors sign off on this and I'm glad that one called in. I didn't know if they were going to email or call in.
Thank you, sir. Does the board have any questions? Mr. Dofino?
Jane does.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Jane. I was looking down.
So, did you construct the shed?
I purchased this, I purchased the shed.
And located it on site?
Improper, yes.
And when did you do that?
Four years ago, I believe.
Yeah. And then when you had the electrical work done, did the electrician pull a permit at that time?
Yes, yes. All permits were pulled for the town. Yeah, electrical didn't pull the permit. We also had.
We also. What is your hardship?
A hardship is if we were to move, well, one, we would have to, all the electrical equipment goes underground. It goes from the shed underground to a gas line and to a pool equipped pad. So by, we would have to take that off the shed to then move the shed or we would have to actually go and redo all the gas lines and all the power lines and redistribute that to another eight feet away. But the real hardship comes down to, if we actually were to move the shed, we don't have a lot of property in our backyard. If we were to move that shed, any, any footage more from the property line, we simply could not walk or pull a lawnmower to the back.
Really? Because I'm looking at the site plan and I don't see where the problem is. You have all that lawn space? Between the pool and the shed? Am I missing something? Okay, so it's, so is what you're saying, your hardship is financial?
Financial, yeah, financial. I can go into some personal things financially, but yeah, financially as well as it, it comes down to requiring the, doing all of that work as well as looking forward to the refi.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you.
Yep, appreciate the question.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this matter? It's 61 Harvester Road. Hearing none, we're going to. Yeah.
Question. Is this a conforming lot or is it a non-conforming lot?
It has 15,000 square feet. The, the minimum required is 20,000.
It's already non-conforming.
Correct.
Thanks.
Any, and there's no one that wants to speak in favor, and again, I'm going to close the hearing on 61 Harvester Road. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item that we have is 294 Colony Street. It's map 128, parcel 294. Petition of Cory and Kaylee Chow for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4.3, to reduce the side setback for an accessory structure from 10 feet, proposing 5.6 feet, and section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 30%, currently 19.1%, proposing 33.4%. Permission to construct a two-car detached garage and raised patio, premises B zone. And Ms. Chow, are you presenting this?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
So I'm Kaylee Chow. It's 294 Colony Street. We are requesting a variance, two variances essentially for the same reason. The hardship in our situation is just unusual topography. We had submitted some photos to Matt as well. It's a, it's a very uneven and sloped lot. So the variance for the garage is basically to move it a little bit closer to one side of the property. We are on a corner lot, so instead of it being 10 feet, it would be the 5.6 just because it's the most level part of the land to be able to put a garage. There's really no other area within the lot where it could be put just based upon that topography. And then the secondary piece is just the land coverage essentially, you know, it's, while it's above grade, it's above grade because a retaining wall would be necessary because again, just it's an unusual sloped piece of land.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Is there any questions for Ms. Chow on the application? Yes, Jane, order.
So I had to unmute. So I'm on the drawing. It's very unclear. What the, what is the finished elevation of the proposed patio relative to the grade?
It should be about a foot or so above grade. And again, it's just based upon the fact that a retaining wall would be necessary to even out the land to even put something which was on grade.
And then your, then the other question is about the driveway. It gets really wide when it reaches the base of the proposed garage, like right onto the property line?
I don't believe that the, I don't believe that the drawings are to change the existing driveway.
Well, because it shows that it is. It shows that it gets very wide next to the property line. And that's what I'm wondering is if you're going to fill to raise the level up, you're doing it right on the property line. I'm wondering how that's going to affect your neighbor when you start excavating on the property line.
We did receive, you know, we had showed all of the surveys and everything to all of our neighbors and we didn't have any objections that were there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this matter, 294 Colony Street?
Actually, I'm sorry. I have, I apologize. I have another question.
Okay.
You said that the patio is only a foot up, but you've got like one, two, like five steps down to the driveway.
The, the property as it stands is, is very uneven and very sloped. So in some areas, it would be, you know, a little bit higher and in some areas it would be lower because essentially we would have to level out the land.
So the, so therefore the area of the proposed patio is part of your new coverage because it's above.
Exactly. So the intention isn't to have it be heightened in any way. It's intended to be on grade. But again, it's not possible to do it the way that it stands because the yard is so uneven.
But it could be smaller. It doesn't have to be as big as it, as you've shown it. Because then you could get it under the 30% coverage, right?
I, I suppose, yeah. I mean, I think part of it is, again, it's just, it wouldn't necessarily be even above it if it was, if the yard itself was level, which is what the hardship is.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to make, Daphne, your question?
I do. So so you wanted to construct a two-car garage. Have you thought of just constructing a one-car garage?
We do have two cars and we do have two young children and car seats and kind of coming and going in both. So we would hope to have the, the two as just kind of a safer version for the children.
Any other questions? Okay. Just to double check, now is there anyone that has a comment in opposition or in favor of this application, 294 Colony Street? Hearing none. All right, Ms. Chow, thank you. That closes the hearing on 294 Colony Street. Our next item that we have is number four, 46 Baldwin Terrace, map 139, parcel 35. Petition of Jane Goodrich for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback for an open porch from 20 feet, proposing 17 feet, and the rear setbacks for the dwelling and deck from 30 feet and 28, proposing 22.3 feet and 17.3 feet, and section 5.2.5 to increase the lot coverage and total floor area from 20% and 40%, proposing 26.54% and 54.17%. Permission to construct a new FEMA compliant single-family home, premises A zone. And I think Falcone, Mr. Falcone is presenting this?
Yes, my name is Paul Falzoni.
Falzone.
46 Baldwin, yes. It's an undersized, non-conforming lot and we would like to build a FEMA compliant two and a half story home for ourselves. And we walked around to the abutting neighbors and showed them the elevation and some plot plans and none of them opposed. You know, and I'm not really familiar with all of this, so my architect, Phil, is on the call also. If there's questions that really need to be answered that are above me.
Okay.
Hi, hi, this is Phil Seron, the architect for the Falzones. If I, if I might, Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so as, as Paul said, this is an existing non-conforming lot. And although we're asking for variances on both coverage and on FAR, in fact, if it was a conforming lot, we'd be able to build a 3,750 square foot house and we're proposing 3,250 square feet. So we're significantly under what the zone would permit. Same as in floor area, that's the total coverage, the first numbers. The floor area, we're still under by almost 300 square feet of what the zone allows. And if I might share my screen for a second?
Sure.
So what, what you see here, this is, this is our proposed lot, our proposed house. And in fact, the existing house on the back here is only nine and a half feet from the street to the existing deck that's there. So we're actually further away from the back street. On this side, we're a little bit closer, we're, I'm sorry, we're a little bit further away also on this side than the existing house. So we're trying to bring the house as close to conformance as we could. And although we're asking for a variance on the front, it's mostly because of the steps. And as you probably know, being that we're in a FEMA zone and the existing house is non-conforming to FEMA requirements, but being that we're in a FEMA zone, it does raise the first floor of the house. So by the mere nature of being in a FEMA zone, it requires a lot more steps in the front of, in the front of the house to get into the first floor. And that's really why we need the variance here because we're at 31.4 feet off of the property line in the front here to the actual house. Same thing in the back. And our two, our two side property setbacks that were required, that we're asking for are mostly because we need to also elevate air conditioning units, meters and all of that. So it's really because of the chimney on the one side and the platform we need for our utilities on the other side that's requiring us to get, to request a variance. Just really quickly, here is, this is what the proposed house is going to look like. It's on the first floor. We'll meet the requirement, the FEMA requirement for the amount of open space that we need, mostly with lattice around the house, a garage on one part of it, and then the two and a half stories above it. And then you could see, we're, you know, we're relatively high above grade, which requires again, the stairs to get into the front of the house, which really is what's creating that front setback. So again, existing house is non-conforming, ours will be conforming. Non-conforming lot is really what's requiring us to ask for these variances. But that would take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Seron. Could you take that screen share?
Absolutely, I would take it down. Absolutely. I will take it down.
All right. All right. Um, now, is the board have any questions for Mrs. Serrano or Mr. Falzone? Uh, Daphne, I see you too, Jane.
So, um, it just always seems like a best practice to me when you're building something new to do it within the zoning regulations. So I'm just curious to know if you considered a design that actually fits the regulations, if you considered that to begin with?
We did look at that. I mean, that's of course the first approach we would always take is to try to conform with the regulations. But being that, being that number one, the house is, not only it's a lot non-conforming, but it's also on two streets, which increases the step. We don't, it's not just the rear setback anymore. Now it's two street setbacks. And although you get some relief from that, we still, that does cre- increase our setbacks that we needed. Um, again, we tried to bring it as close to conformance as we could, and we are on most, on two of the sides, we're more closer to conformance than the existing houses. But working within the footprint that we would be allowed just really honestly doesn't work. At that point, it's almost just keep the existing house, which again, we don't want to do that because it's not, it's a non-conforming house from a FEMA requirement. So for us to get it into FEMA requirements, really, we need to knock it down and build a new house. If we wanted to just do, you know, some renovations and keep the existing house, I guess we could, but of course, if we didn't go over the fifty percent rule, but I don't think that's in anybody's best interest.
Thank you.
Uh, Jane, go ahead.
Um, I, my question was similar to Daphne's. Like what is, what's preventing you from designing a house that does conform?
Honestly, we just, I mean, to get it to conform, and we did some just really early schematics on it, um, the house becomes, it becomes almost unbuildable. It's just too small. It doesn't really work for that lot. So, um, again, if we were going to take that approach, we would probably take the approach of leaving it as a non-conforming house and do it as much renovation as we could to it.
But so you could, uh, you could, um, apply for the setback variances that you're applying for, but you could design a house that's under the twenty percent and forty percent, right? Because you're asking for an FAR of fifty-four percent.
Right.
Fifty-four-point-one-seven, that's way beyond forty percent.
Yeah, in that neighborhood, I mean, for the far, for the floor ratio, that zone allows eighteen-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet. We're only asking to build sixteen-hundred square feet. So we're still under what the zone allows, although it's a non-conforming lot. So really, our, our hardship without question is the fact that it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot. We're not asking to build anything bigger than what would be permitted in that neighborhood. In fact, we're asking for a smaller house.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Katie?
Just to clarify, so is the, is the coverage, you know, total footprint of new house the same, smaller, or bigger than the existing house on the property?
I'm gonna have to just pull out my site plan and take a look at that, actually. So the existing total lot coverage, existing is twenty-two percent. We're asking for twenty-six percent. So the total coverage is, is slightly bigger. The existing house, I believe, I'm not sure, and Paul, if you're on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh. We lost Mrs. Serrano. Okay.
We lost Mrs. Serrano.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess he's not coming back.
He'll be back.
He's looking up on Vision, right?
Say, hello? I don't think he's coming back.
We can probably look on Vision, basically look at those dimensions, right?
Maybe he, he could call in?
Matt, can you try to get in touch with Mr. Serrano to see if we can get him back in?
You got it.
Can I say one thing? People hear me? People hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Do you hear you?
So I'll mute my, I don't know why you can't hear me on my computer, but let me mute that because I'm sure you're getting an echo. Um, for some reason, my sound's not working all of a sudden. I don't know what happened, but, um, so the square footage, I gotta put my screens back up here. So the existing, the floor area of the existing house is sixteen-hundred-and-thirty square feet. Um, I don't know if it's, Paul, is it a two-story house?
It's a, what, a, a split. It's a split. So it's a couple of stairs down, a couple of stairs up from the main level.
Right. So the, the footprint of the existing house is about three hundred square feet smaller than we're, or two-hundred-and-fifty square feet smaller than what we're proposing.
I think that answers Katie's question. Um, any other questions? All right, um, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or opposition to this particular application? It's forty-six Baldwin Terrace. Hearing nothing. Uh, thank you, Mr. Falzone. Thank you, uh, Mrs. Serrano.
Thank you. I apologize for that technology glitch there.
Not a problem, not a problem. The, uh, hearing on, uh, forty-six Baldwin Terrace is now closed. Our next item is number five, one-fifteen Tuckahoe Lane, map one-two-five parcel three-one-eight. Petition of Garrett and Cynthia Magart, uh, for variance of the zoning regulations, section five-point-two-point-four to reduce the side setback from seven feet, currently point-six feet proposing point-six feet. Permission to construct a rear second-floor dormer premises A-zone. And I think, uh, the owner is presenting this?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, uh, Garrett Magart. Um, and yeah, you basically said it. We, the proposal is to construct a rear second-floor dormer, which is um, up against the property line. And our hardship is the way our dwelling is positioned on the lot. We have a conforming lot. But our home is, like, I believe it's eighteen inches from the property line. Um, so if we were to build the dormer with the setback, we'd have to start seven feet in from the property line. And I, we're just looking to build the second-story, rear second-story dormer over the existing footprint of the house that's here now. Uh, and the house was built in nineteen fifty-three, and you could see the property line on the A-two survey.
Thank you. Sir, is there any questions for Mr. Magart? Jane, go ahead.
Hi, I'm, I'm looking at the site plan and is the proposal a garage addition, a second-floor addition, and a one-story addition? That's all part of this application?
No, the application is for the variance against the property line. I, that's the only thing that I was told I need to seek, seek a variance for. I have, I have plans for other portions of the house, but I've thought and believed that those are well within the, uh, the codes for that zone.
Okay, so I understand. So the variances, the zoning variance is just for that dormer?
Correct.
Everything else is in conformance?
As far as I know, it should be. And I will find out shortly later, I suppose, when I get the permits.
No, okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Is there anyone that wishes?
All the abutting neighbors have all signed off on it. Um, just to add that too, you should have all the signatures from all the abutting neighbors.
Thanks, sir. Um, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to one-fifteen Tuckahoe Lane? Hearing none. Uh, the hearing on one-fifteen Tuckahoe Lane is not closed. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you ver- thank you for your time. Thank you.
Our next item is number six, one-fifty-eight Robin Lane, map one-two-five parcel two-hundred. Petition of New Beginning Properties LLC for a variance of zoning regulations, section five-point-two-point-four to increase lot coverage from twenty percent, currently thirteen-point-four percent, proposing twenty-four-point-four-four percent. Permission to construct and attach one-story, one-car garage premises A-zone. And, uh, I see someone signed in, and it's two people, New Beginning Properties is there. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Ivana Rakovic.
Hi, Renata Vjerga.
Uh, we are the owners of New Beginning Properties and, um, the house is owned by New Beginning Properties, but Renata and her husband will be residing at that place. Um, the house was built in nineteen sixty-two, and the existing two-car garage does not quite conform to the, uh, high, to the height requirements for today's vehicles. Uh, so we would like to expand our garage. But the, um, the house is located too close, uh, to that side's property, uh, line. So, um, our only option, uh, would be to expand to the left side of the house. Um, and we're asking for a small, um, increase in the lot coverage. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's, uh, board have any questions? Yes, Jane?
Um, so on the renderings that you provide, provided, it shows the existing driveway and garage doors remaining. Is that, is that how you're gonna leave it?
Yes, it will remain for those two-car garage, but the garage, garage is really low. So we are trying to buil- build another garage to the left side and who will construct the, the, um, driveway and the one-story garage.
And you're gonna, so you're gonna have two curb cuts, two driveways?
Yeah, yes.
And, um, you said this is a one-car garage that you're at, yours suggests?
Yeah, one, one-car garage, one story.
Okay, it's twenty-two feet wide?
Yes.
That's the size of many two-car garages. So have you considered making it narrow?
Yeah, it will be oversized one-car garage. You know, for the days, cars, uh, like her husband has a pickup truck.
Yeah, a lot of tools and stuff. So we have no too much, not too much space in the existing garage. So we were planning, uh, to build another one so he can put all of his tools in the garage and he, he will fit his truck.
And then you're gonna, you're gonna abandon the other two garages or use them for what?
We could use it for storage for, we have a son who also has a car, so we really need the, um, car space.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Daphne.
And, um, could you just repeat your hardship?
So, uh, we're, I'm trying to, asking you to, uh, to let us increase in lot coverage. It's a small, um,
Small amount.
Small amount, but still we, we are asking if you can, um, allow us to, to build that garage to that side.
So that's your request, but, but do you have a hardship?
Yeah, the hardship is that we, she has, um, the husband and the wife and the son and that the smooth, uh, two-car garage is really small. Really small, very, the height is really, uh, so they are, they need, uh, more space for the garage.
Any other questions? All right. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this, uh, application, one-fifty-eight Robin Lane? Hearing none. Um, that, the hearing on one-fifty-eight Robin Lane is not closed. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is number seven, forty-one, excuse me, number seven, four-zero-one Oldfield Road, map one-eight-two parcel four-five-seven. Petition of William and Monica Delaney for variance of zoning regulations, section five-point-two-point-four-point-three to reduce the setback for an accessory structure from ten feet, currently four-point-eight feet, proposing one-point-eight feet. And section five-point-two-point-five to increase lot coverage from thirty percent, currently thirty-point-two percent, proposing thirty-one percent. Permission to construct exterior staircase with landing premises B-zone. And I think the owners are applying for that?
Yes. Hi, yep, my name is Molly Delaney.
Oh, there you go.
Hi. And we are just, um, requesting to, um, for a variance to build a, um, a staircase on the backside of the garage. Currently, it's a pulled-down, pulled-down staircase from, um, from the ceiling, which requires, um, you know, everything to be moved out of the garage in order for the, um, for the ladder to come down in order to get up into that area. Um, so we're proposing to build the, uh, staircase on the backside. And we did get all the, um, those signatures from all the neighbors and they're all fine with it.
Does the board have any questions for Ms. Delaney? Yes, Jane, go ahead.
I always have questions. Um, did you consider locating that stair on the other side of the garage? So you wouldn't have it one-point-eight feet from the property line? In other words, on the side that faces the house? And I know there's a shed dormer there that you may have to.
Yeah.
Make a little taller, but it, it could fit there.
Yeah, there, there's windows up there, um, and it really wouldn't work for the landing to be there in order to get into, into it, I don't believe.
Um, but yeah, you could design it. It would take some more construction.
Well, it would be reconstructed. We've already constructed. It's, it's a new construction of the garage. So, I mean, that would cost a lot more money for us.
How about, have you considered putting the, the stairs inside the garage?
Yeah, we have. And that would, it would just, um, decrease the size of, of the space up there as well as, um, you know, space in the garage.
And that, that would be inconvenient.
That would be, um, we're eventually wanting to build a, um, an office up there. We have another, uh, child that came home, um, and it's, uh, we need to convert, uh, my current office into a better, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, hearing no other question. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Four-zero-one Oldfield Road. Hearing none. We will, uh, close the hearing on four-zero-one Oldfield Road. Thank you very much, Ms. Delaney.
Thank you.
Our next item is number eight, two-forty-one Catherine Terrace, map one-eight-two parcel two-three-nine. Petition of Matthew and Corey Allen for variance of zoning regulations, section five-point-two-point-four to reduce the street line setback for an open porch from twelve feet proposing ten-point-two feet. Permission to construct an open front porch premises B-zone. I think the owners are presenting this. You're muted still?
Sorry. Um, yeah, hi, my name's Corey Allen. I am, um, asking to do this because uh, the way that the, the porch is built, um, when we moved in four years ago, it goes out into the driveway. So you, we cannot drive our car into the garage because it's totally impeding half of the space. Um, so we would like to move the porch to the front so we can have a clear driveway. Um, and Colin is here. We work with him for all of the real designs and also pass it over to him.
Okay, I'm going to, uh, try to share my screen here. So my, my name is Colin Healy. I designed the, uh, the project and can you, can you see, uh, this in your screen clearly?
Yeah.
Okay. The, looking at the elevation drawings on the left, you can see the existing condition with a little porch that's on the right-hand side that was built by a previous owner. So Corey and Matt didn't realize that they had a problem until they actually took possession of the house and started using it. So our proposal is to move it to the front. Uh, the lot is existing non-conforming. We're allowed to have an eight-foot, uh, projection into the front setback for a open front porch. Um, in order to build this, which is, um, I'm gonna go to the next, uh, the next page. the next page here to show you plan. Excuse me. All right, this is showing down here at the bottom of the page. This shows the position of the porch now. This shows the view that you already saw. This shows the elevation on the side and the porch that we would be building is virtually identical inside to the one that we would be moving in size. Down here at the bottom, you can see the the position of the new porch. We're allowed to go from the setback line, which is somewhere back here, eight feet out. We need one-point-eight feet of relief from the setback requirements in order to build the porch in a safer and more useful place. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you, sir. If you could take down the screen, that way I can tell once people are asking or want to ask questions.
Okay, let's see if I can do that. Stop sharing. Okay.
Yep, there you go. Thank you, sir. All right, so are any questions? And this is for Ms. Allen or Mr. Healy? No questions. Okay, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application, which is two forty-one Catherine Terrace?
I might add that Cory and Matt got signatures from a very large number of their neighbors in support. She could probably tell you the exact number. There were none who objected.
Thanks, Colin. Yeah, twenty-two neighbors signed the petition, and I think we had four letters of support.
Thank you. Just to make sure there's no one, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? All right, there's no one. Okay, we're gonna close the hearing on two two forty-one Catherine Terrace. Thank you very much, Ms. Allen and Mr. Healy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is number nine, one-nineteen Melody Lane, map seven-six parcel three-one-two petition of Carlos Herrera for variance of the zoning regulations section five-point-two-point-four-point-three to reduce the street line setback from thirty feet proposing twenty-six-point-eight feet and twenty-seven-point-three feet permission to legitimize an already installed above-ground pool premises A-zone and is Attorney Russo, you're presenting this?
Yes, Chairman, Commissioners, good be good to be before you, Chris Russo with Russo and Rizzo LLC, offices at ten Sasko Hill Road in Fairfield, here on behalf of the applicant for this property at one-nineteen Melody Lane. I'm gonna just share my screen if I can show you the site plan. So this is a single-family dwelling lot. It's located in the residence A-zone. It's unique in that it is it's located on the corner of Melody Lane and Melody Court. But Melody Court actually wraps around the side and the rear of the property. So in essence, it's got three street frontages on it. It's considered to just be a corner lot right here on this corner of Melody Lane and Melody Court. But it it really has almost another corner here because of the way that oh, and maybe this this might just be coming up. Can you see the screen now?
Yes, you can.
So you can see Melody Court swings around the back here and essentially creates another corner. On top of that, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of Melody Court. And so this cul-de-sac cuts into the rear yard or, you know, it's it's the backyard, but it's got a street line setback from here and in really impinges on on the yard. So instead of having a, you know, a normal front street line setback, gave a street line setback here on Melody Lane, here on Melody Court on the side, and then also Melody Court here in the back, including the cul-de-sac area, which which obviously greatly restricts the area that you could put a an above-ground pool. So my client, you know, as a parent of five-year-old twins and a one-year-old during the pandemic, I can appreciate a parent's desperation to to supply entertainment for cooped-up children. And in my client installed this above-ground pool, he wasn't aware that the the setback restrictions would apply, street line setback restrictions would apply in this case. Once he found out, he went to pull a permit and and realized when he went to zoning that that he would require a variance for this pool. So it's interesting because so this, so there's a thirty-foot setback that swings around and applies all this to to again, the front, the side and the rear. And under the regulations, if you're on a corner lot, you're allowed to be within twenty-two feet of the street line. But this is the the Melody Lane and Melody Court is is where it's considered the corner. But back here, because we're in excess of twenty-two feet, but that's not the setback back here, even though it looks like a a corner here. It's thirty feet. So i-if the twenty-two-foot street line setback would apply back here, we'd be in compliance. But because it's still thirty feet all the way back here, we need to come before you for this this variance. I'm gonna show you just some pictures, too. It's it's something that it doesn't have any negative impact on the neighborhood. We've submitted signatures to zoning from our surrounding neighbors that are in support and and you could see, I think some of them didn't even realize it was there because there's a fence along the rear yard to to give my client some some property, privacy, I'm sorry. So this this fence wraps around the back of the property. It goes along the side here. This is the cul-de-sac. You could see where it starts to where the cul-de-sac cuts in to his yard. This is the side of the house. And the pool's on the other side of this, and you can see you you can't you can't see the pool at all. And then here from the front, so from Melody Lane, this is looking towards the area of the yard where the where the pool is, and you still can't see it. So nobody could see it. That's the front of the house. This is across Melody Court. You could see that there's kind of a mature buffer here that that's pretty thick that would protect this neighbor from being able to see it, even if there wasn't a fence there, but there's a fence on top of it. So we really think this, you know, has absolutely no impact on the neighborhood. The petition from the neighbors backs that up and our hardship just obviously has to do with the site conditions and in that we have a we we have a public streets setback on three of our four sides and a cul-de-sac that also comes into our yard, which which further reduces the area. And this is really, I think, if I could show, if I could go back to the site plan real quick. If you look if you look where this pool is, if we shifted this pool farther away from the street on this side from Melody Court, we would need a greater variance for our proximity to this cul-de-sac, because again, that's a continuation of the public street. So this location is really, I think, the the perfect location for this pool. And in, you know, the hardship being that we have a a street line setback on three sides of our of our property. So that's really it. Pretty pretty straightforward, but happy to answer any questions from the board.
All right, thank you. Attorney Russo, could you stop your screen share?
Yep.
All right, the board have any questions for Attorney Russo? Okay, hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this matter, one-nineteen Melody Lane? All right, no one speaking in favor or in opposition, other than the supports, obviously, from the neighbors that were already submitted. It's gonna close the hearing on one-nineteen Melody Lane. Thank you, Attorney Russo. Next item is number ten, ten-twenty Old Post Road, map one-eight-zero parcel three petition of Melvin F. Hill the fourth for a variance of zoning regulations section five-point-two-point-four-point-three to reduce the sideline setbacks for an accessory structure from ten feet, currently one-point-three feet proposing one-point-three feet permission to construct a second-floor addition to existing detached garage premises A-zone. Attorney Russo, are you still presenting this as well?
Yes, I'm back chair here on behalf of the applicant, Chris Russo with Russo and Rizzo LLC, offices at ten Sasko Hill Road in Fairfield. I will share my screen again. This is another, you know, pretty straightforward application. This this property is located on Old Post Road. It abuts the Fairfield Library parking lot. And all my client is looking to do is replace the existing garage, which is dilapidated. If you've been in the Fairfield Library parking lot, you've probably seen seen this garage, because it's it, you know, it's only one-point-three feet off of the line. So we're looking to just replace it in the exact same footprint that it currently is in. The reason for the variance, the the height on this to the midpoint of the roof is eighteen and a half, and you're allowed to have that in this zone, but you would have to be ten feet off of the the requirements for that to be ten feet off of the property line. And so because of the increase in height, even though it's in the exact same location, we we have to request this variance of the side property line setback. Just so you you want, you know where the site is, and I'm sure I'm sure many of you have driven by this house. It's a it's a pretty well-known historic house, but its its neighbors are here to the north is the library parking lot. Just below it, closer to Old Post Road, is the Kennedy Center Building. Behind it is is Brick Walk, that plaza area in their parking lot, and actually their dumpsters are right here, right at this back property line. And then to the south of it is actually a parcel of land that's owned by the town, town of Fairfield. So they don't have a a single-family residential neighbor to this property. Across the street, there's a a doctor's office. And then, you know, as you you go further south on Old Post Road is is when the the rest of the single-family residential homes. So it's kind of here on an island in this garage. You know, not only does it serve the purpose of being a garage, but it's also a bit of a screen to their backyard with such a public use next to it and behind it. If I can see if I can pull up. Sorry, here, I'm trying to pull up my photos. I'll help you get a sense of where this is. So this picture right here, you can, did the photos come up? Can you see the photos? Yeah. Okay, so this is from the the Fairfield Library parking lot. And here's the side of it. It it's pretty dilapidated, but if you go right up to the edge of the parking lot, I mean, you can literally stare into their garage. This is the rear of the Kennedy Center property that that abuts abuts this site. This is from farther back in the Fairfield Library parking lot. You could see the garage there, and you could see the way it's 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 situated here, kind of on the corner of the lot. It does it does block you from being able to to look right into their backyard. This is the back of the garage. You could see that it's, you know, the windows and and the structure itself is pretty rundown. This, I'm standing on the on this picture, I'm standing on the public parking lot, and I could see right into their their garage. This is looking from the the from the library parking lot, looking across their backyard, and you could see in the distance a single-family dwelling that's located a bit off of Old Post Road. There's the Chase Building that's across the street. This is the the Kennedy Center Building that's right next to the site. This is from Old Post Road, and this is really the because this tree, this this red tree that's here is there really this angle is kind of the only way you really see, you know, even see this garage from Old Post Road. The next picture, you could see it with that tree there. It's it's pretty well buffered and hard to see this this garage all the way back there. This is along the southern side of the property, which has a a mature you know, vegetation that screens, you know, all the properties from the south from seeing into this property. And so my my client's just looking to replace this dilapidated garage in in construct a a more a garage that's more in keeping with the store character of this neighborhood. And I'm gonna pull that plan up just so you could see. One second. Okay, that should be coming up. Truly, yeah, there we go. Okay. So this is the design of the garage, very nice and something in keeping with the the historic character with the with the dormers, certainly an upgrade from what's currently existing. And you know, we think it's a tremendous improvement. It will, again, it's in the exact same location as the existing garage. It it's it's on the same foundation. The the requirement for the variance is that because we're increasing the midpoint to the roof to eighteen and a half feet, and it's not setback ten feet. We need that variance for the the side property setback. So happy to answer any questions regarding it. But I think it's pretty straightforward.
All right, could you remove the screen share, Attorney Russo?
Absolutely.
All right, questions? Jane, I see a question.
It's a little confusing because the application says you're replacing the building, but what we were handed says you are adding onto the building. So which is?
We are replacing it. I'm guessing the adding on, the adding on language would be that we're increasing the height. So there will be a second story to this garage where there isn't one right now, and that is going to be used for an office area.
Yeah, I understand that, but are you are you taking down the building that's there?
Correct, yes, we're taking down the building that's there, yes.
Okay. So what's preventing you from building the new building eight-point-seven feet over? So that you get to the ten feet?
Well, we just wanted to, because there's a foundation there, we were just gonna build in that exact same location, and that garage is the existing garage has been there for for decades. And so because that's been established, we we just thought to build it right on that. And again, it it acts as a bit of a screen to the very public uses that abut this property.
But if you built, if it was ten feet over, you could build it, you could plant in that ten-foot buffer for privacy, I suppose.
You could, yeah, you could. You could plant something, but you know, again, just because that 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 location is so established, it seemed to be the 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 best location for for this garage.
And I'm also looking, you're sharing the driveway straddles the property line? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, so. Yeah, so I have a overhead view.
I'm looking at the site plan, yeah.
That I can pull up. So yes, if you look, I'm going to pull up an aerial so you could see the, but yes, we do, we share a driveway with the Kennedy Center.
Which is a house where people live, right? It's a residence, it's a house.
Yeah, it's, it's more like, yes, you know, not a single family is, is.
But it's a residence, right? Yeah, but it's a residence.
It's residential, yeah.
Who maintains the driveway? Who plows it?
I believe, I'm not positive on that, I believe there's a shared agreement on that, but I, I'm, I actually, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, all right, those are my questions, thank you.
All right, Daphne, you have a question?
Yes, you might have said that, I might have just missed it, but could you repeat the hardship?
Well, I think that, one that we're proposing in, in a, in a location that, where this garage has been established for decades, and putting it on the exact same footprint as has been there, and the fact that we are a single-family residential use that's on an island, essentially, with, you know, you see here the Kennedy Center, it's not, it's residential, but it's not single-family. And I believe there, I believe there are employees who work there as well. So we have, we have that use abutting us to the north. We have the very public use of the town library parking lot, which you could see here. On our rear property line, we have Brick Walk Plaza and its parking lot and its dumpsters. And then to the south, we have a, a property that's owned by the town.
And those are hardships? Okay.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know, it's, 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 it's single-family residential, but it's not surrounded by it. And so that, that, I think, you know, goes to the fact that the garage is a bit of a screen for, for these uses that are around it.
I guess I'm just not understanding why you have to build a second story, but, but anyway, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Attorney Russo, does, this has to go through historic after us, correct?
Correct, yes, has to be approved by historic. And frankly, I think, I mean, that's my opinion, but I think they'll think it's proven because the, the garage is so dilapidated that, you know, I think this will be a tremendous improvement from, from existing.
And, and excuse me for asking a stupid question, but why can't you just replace the existing garage without a variance?
Well, we could, we could do that. So we could just replace the existing garage. My, my client was seeking to, to add a space for office areas, you know, I, I've been here on a, a number of applications, particularly around, you know, the beach in this past year with the pandemic, of people who are now working from home, as my client does, that is, you know, looking for an office space. And it seemed, if I, if they can rebuild the garage in its exact location as, at its current height, it didn't really make sense to then add a separate building for a office area that was compliant and further off from the side property line. The better option was to raise the, the garage in its current location and put it there, instead of creating, you know, two separate structures on the, on the back of the property.
That being said, creating two sep, you, so we're just, so you could create two separate structures and be compliant, so you could replace the garage, have a beautiful garage compliant. It's just, it's just a statement, you don't have to answer it, thank you.
Any other questions? Katie?
A question. So just to confirm, if we're, let's just say they were to simply rebuild the garage, would still need the same variance, wouldn't they?
No, because it's, it's pre-existing non-conforming.
All right, any other questions? That closes the hearing on number 10, 1020 Old Post Road. Our next item is number 11, 354 Villa Avenue, map 33, parcel 144, petition of Eileen Leeds for variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the side setback from 5 feet, currently 3.9 feet, proposing 4 feet. Permission to enclose an open landing, premises B zone. Ms. Leeds, I think I saw that you were here at one point?
Yes, we're, we're here.
Okay, go ahead. Yes.
Hi, I'm Don Leeds, Eileen's husband, and I'll explain what it is, because it's a little odd. It's going from 3.9 to 4, which is a little confusing, because it's actually getting further away. So we have a small cottage that's about 1,000 feet, we have just one bathroom in it, which is upstairs with the bedrooms. And I work full-time, I'm 70, just turned 70, my wife is 60, and we work from home full-time. And running up and down the stairs, obviously, is an issue. And we figured out a way to keep the house really as it was, pretty much inside and outside, by adding a half-bath to a landing that's right outside the door of the kitchen. And, you know, the cottage is 100 years old, the door's been there forever, the landing and the steps have been there forever, my wife has owned the house for 20 years. And what we're doing essentially is taking that landing, when you, when you walk outside the kitchen, you're on a rectangular landing, and then you go down a few concrete steps to sort of the side of the house where you can get to the backyard from, other than going through the basement. And what we're doing is we're taking that landing, which has a roof over it, has a, you know, railing on it, and it was 14.5 feet. We're adding 18 inches to the edge of it, and we're going to put a wall, you know, walls, we're going to enclose it with a door, so that rather than just being a landing, it's actually the half-bath with, instead of the half-bath just stopping, we're keeping the entrance going in and out, because we have a vegetable garden in the back, we want to be able to go in and use that as well. So it's still an egress, and, but it's also a half-bath. From the side of the house, the wall, it, it, it sort of juts out of the house, so the house is sort of a square-ish, and there's a little rectangular jutting, you know, piece that juts out. Half of that rectangle that's jutting out is an existing pantry that's been there forever. And the other half is this open area, which is the, you know, the enclosed port, you know, porch before we enclose it. And that wall has been there forever, the distance has been there. The neighbor is going to see essentially that same line, nothing is really changing, except we're moving 18 inches more towards the street, so that we can have a little bit more floor space to be able to fit the toilet and the, the sink, and have the regulation space that's required. So that takes an extra 18 inches, we're going to move the steps 18 inches forward towards the street, but the distance between the property line and my neighbor, and there's only one of four neighbors, because there's five abutting properties on this, there's only one neighbor that can actually see what we're doing. He's completely fine with it, the other four have signed the petitions, you know, in favor as well. And I didn't even think that we would need a variance, but it turns out because we're enclosing it, that now is a different kind of a structure than it being an open porch. So that's really what we're doing, and the hardship is sort of obvious, I'm 70 and I've got the bladder, I'm sorry, any questions? Someone said something?
No, no, there was just a beep, go ahead.
Okay, so, I mean, the hardships, and there's a new hardship, if you needed another one besides me being 70 and having the normal bladder issues that 70-year-old men do, is my mother, who's 92, is now going to be living with us on and off for somewhere between three and six months a year, and for her not to have a half-bath on the main floor, where she'd be living during, you know, during the day, is really going to be tough. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's pretty much it.
Okay, thanks, sir. Go ahead, Jane, questions?
Okay, I'm unmuted. So the obvious question, why can't you just turn the pantry into a half-bath?
Because I have no pantry in the house, it's 1,000 feet, and that's where we keep our food. I mean, we have no closet. Picture a 1,000-foot cottage with two bedrooms, and I couldn't, I couldn't possibly do that and have any place to keep our food. If I, I could, I could walk this in there now, and you could see how packed it is with food and pots and pans, because it's a 1,000-foot cottage. I mean, the downstairs is 500 feet.
Okay, and then my second question is, that door off the existing kitchen, that's your second means of egress that you're required to have?
There are three. We have the basement door, we have the side door, and that's still going to be there. We're not taking the door away, except now rather, so if you picture walking out of the kitchen, you open the door, in the old days, you'd open it up, you'd be standing on a little rectangle, which is now going to be 18 inches more towards the street. There'd be steps going down, and instead of seeing a railing and seeing the neighbor, you would now see a wall, you'd see the neighbor through the window, and to turn to walk down the steps, there'd be a door, and the door has room to come in, which is part of the 18 inches, has room to come in, and you walk down the steps, and it's still the same egress that it was.
Okay, this is my concern, if somebody is using the bathroom, the door's locked. That's the end of your second means of egress, it's locked from the inside, how do you get out?
We have, what about the egress in the basement, which is the second egress?
No, I think it has to be right there, and then the other question is.
Also, if you, if you think about, if you think about what you just described as the scenario, if somebody is sitting in the bathroom and the door is locked, if they want to get out, they can knock on the door, there's actually a glass thing there, and it's only two people living in the house and my mother, so it's not like anyone's gonna, gonna lock it. So I don't understand how that would be an issue if there was a fire in the kitchen, we wanted to get out, everyone would want to get out, and you would open the door and get out.
Okay, the other, the last, my last comment is, that's a second means of egress, so outside that door, I believe you have to have a landing before you go down the steps.
I can have my builder talk to it, Bill Barron is on, and from what I understood, it was fine. Bill, why don't you go and answer that question, but from what I understood, we went through that at one point, and then they said it was fine, you know, given what, given what the structure was and what was there and what we're doing. Billy, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, so are you requiring a landing now?
Well, we're not going to spend time to look it up, but I'm pretty sure you need a landing on either side of every egress door. I'm an architect.
So you can't just have chairs coming down right at that door then? Because we have some fencing that would have to get moved, and if we were to put a landing, right now, we don't have any fencing, but.
Yeah, anyway, we don't have to answer now, it's just I'm putting it out there as an open question.
All right, well, that's going to go to the building department, correct?
Um, yeah.
All right, so that'll be the next step. I mean, once we get this through, we'll have to see what the building department says, you know, with my architectural plans, and if we have to add a, a landing.
Then you'll be back again in front of us.
We would, why, why can't we do, do it now? And if we have to add a landing, we'll add a landing. But I mean, it's not, the landing isn't going to be visible, because there's a fence there. And from what I understood from Bill's discussions with whoever he was talking to in the town, because that was brought up at one point, and it would make it tight, we'd have to move a fence that's there, that we put in about a decade ago, but we could certainly do that. But couldn't, couldn't the zoning board vote on it with or without a landing based on what the, the building department says, and we're willing to do whatever is required?
We can.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject real quick?
Yeah, well, I think, I think I can answer this.
Okay, go ahead.
The variance is for the setback from the side, the variance doesn't have to do anything with whether a landing is required, it's a side setback variance.
So we don't need a landing variance, we just need.
That's not, that's for you to determine with the building department. But the variance is for the size, going from, from the side, let me talk, Mr. Leeds, let me talk. The variance requested is going from the sideline setback. That's the variance. So that's, that's what we're, that's what we're discussing, and that's the only thing we can decide.
Right, but I guess what was brought up by Jane was the idea of coming back to the zoning board, but you're saying that the only thing that requires a variance is the setback, and whether or not we need a landing is a, a building department.
And depending on what the building, well, let me finish, depending what the building department requires, if there's an additional setback that's required, then you'd have to contact, but right now, we're just entertaining a side setback.
Okay, so I guess we'll take it step by step, and if we have to come back, we'll just get on the schedule again.
Okay, is there anyone wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to number 11, 354
I wish my mother were here, she would certainly be in favor.
A week, I think that's expected. I hope so.
I had, I had to say it.
Okay, so I didn't hear anyone, so now we can close the hearing on 354 Villa Avenue. Thank you very much, sir, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Barron. Our next item is number 12, it's 105 May Street, map 79, parcel 577, petition of Andy Stoichkov for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.1.1, to reduce the lot size and lot square from 6,000 square feet and 60 feet, proposing 5,000 square feet and 50 feet, and section 2.7, and, and section 2.7, to reduce the street frontage from 60 feet, proposing 50 feet, permission to establish a building lot for a single-family dwelling, premises B zone, and I think Mr. Stoichkov is presenting?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I want to, there is existing lot, but it's a little bit too small for the zone B. That's why I'm going for the variance to, to see if I can get approved for, make a lot smaller, to build on a smaller lot than zone B required. That's the story.
And I just want to put on the record that I know that there are some people that have sent some emails just recently, having opposition to this, and my suggestion to you, sir, is just to let's, let's wait and see if anyone speaks, and then you can address them all at once. I did see that you sent an email in, commenting on that, so let's just, let's just hold for a moment, let's see if there's questions, let's see if there's anyone else that wants to speak, and then I'll allow you to address all of those emails which the board has received, and you can comment on them at that time, okay?
Okay.
All right, so let's first see if there's any questions for you from the board. Any questions? Yes, Jane, go ahead.
Access to the property now is through your next-door neighbor?
No, I, I own two properties, 65 and 105.
Okay, oh, so that's your house that you're driving in front of to get to the property?
Yes, yes. But to remove the rock, so there is potentially, it's, I planning to do the driveway, remove the rocks, because there is like, only the rocks on the street. So I planning to remove them, cut it with the neighbor, and make it like driveway to the.
I just couldn't figure out how, I didn't realize that that was your house there, because the numbers are all, the house numbers are.
Yeah, it's 65 and 105, so there is two lots, they, they together.
Yeah.
You have a house on the same square foot, it's like 5,000 square feet, and next, a lot next to it is the same 5,000 square feet.
Got it, yeah, okay. Yeah, I just was, okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Well, I am a, a neighbor, if I could.
Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, not yet.
Okay.
I'm asking to see if the board has any questions. Go ahead, Katie.
When was the property purchased?
Three months ago.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, having other questions, okay. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition? Did this matter? I know we've already received some emails, but is there anyone that wishes to speak to that at this time?
I would like to.
And who is that? What's your name?
Hi, my name is Jennifer.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Parsons. I live behind, behind the home on sixty-four Adelaide Street.
All right, Ms. Parsons, just hold one second. I want to see if there's anyone else. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this application?
There is someone on a call, another neighbor, but I don't know, she's having a difficult time getting in.
Do you know her name is Parsons?
Her first name is Lori. She's number seventy-eight Adelaide Street.
Lori Salerno?
Yes.
Okay, we did receive something from Ms. Salerno as well as having opposition to that.
Then there's also the neighbor to the other side of being number fifty-two. His name is Richard. But he is in his own Zoom meetings. He owns a business. So he thought it might be a conflict, but he was just be sending an email as well.
Okay. I have an email, we have an email which was not signed by anyone. And it was dropped off at the zoning. It doesn't even give an address, doesn't really help us.
Yeah, I don't know.
There is a, a second email that was, letter that was sent to the zoning office as well, so that could be that person as well.
Okay.
So let me, while we're seeing if Ms. Salerno, I mean, we do have her email, it's part of our record. So that, you know, that can stand on the comments in that email as well. But if you have something else to add and to say, I'm happy to hear from you now. And it's Jennifer Parsons, sixty-four Adelaide Street. Go ahead.
Who should go first?
You.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so we've lived here for twenty years. And we've loved it here. This community in this neighborhood is pretty much full of ranches and small capes. And we're semi-close in proximity, but enough space. One of the biggest alluring factors of our home is our backyard was always completely private. You wouldn't even know there were houses behind us because it was completely private with a whole lot of trees and a huge gorgeous rock structure that you would see from my upper floor. It's just beautiful and completely private all around our whole backyard. Well, since this gentleman bought the home, he has removed everything, even areas that were not his in the backyard. He said that he got the approval from the neighbor that it belongs to up the hill from him. It was a whole bunch of gorgeous bamboo that's been here since I've been here for over twenty years. So now we have beyond no privacy. You could look straight into my home completely from even the street on his street. The house was previously owned for decades and decades by an older couple that passed away and the children inherited it and they, they took good care of it. It's dated. And it's always been a single family home that was closer to the street. What this gentleman, what this gentleman would like to do is develop two homes, which have never been existent in that back area. Hello, you're, someone's talking.
Yes, whoever, if you're not on mute other than me and the person speaking, please mute yourself. That includes you, Mr. Stoico, just so we make sure we don't have any interference, okay?
Okay, so he, this gentleman began all this construction. He's a builder, I guess, and wants to build two homes. Where it was once a single family lot and the home was closer, not backed up towards our property. Where now there's absolutely no privacy. I could see everything, including the how, everything on that street I could now see. He's already removed all of that. He wants to build two homes and bring it closer to our property line when already there's no privacy. He took away all the greenery. There were gorgeous, beautiful trees. He took away all, almost all the rocks that were existent. These are like huge structural rocks. And I never met him and all of a sudden he knocked on my door a week and a half ago, asking me to sign what he would like to proceed doing. So that was the first I met him and the first I learned of what his desires were. I asked him to send me what he desires to do. When I received it, I discussed it with both my conjoining neighbors and we were all in agreement that this is just not anything of what we would desire to have right behind us between either two full, single family home structures that were never existent and on top of already all of us are quite disheartened with what he's already done. And my biggest question to him was, why didn't he do this prior? Why didn't he have conversations with any of us prior? And, you know, he said that he didn't know he would run into this complication. So we're, none of us are in agreement for this of, for many obvious reasons. Outside aesthetically, the noise level, the condensing, the condension of the homes that he have to make on this property, how close they would have to be. The proximity it would be to our, our property line. It just would feel like people are on top of us. So his answer was it's gonna increase value. I said for his pockets, not for ours, if we were to ever resell our home. Nobody would like to be up against two full, single family homes in their backyard and have zero privacy. He never had to remove all that stuff. I just feel like he put the cart before the horse. And I wasn't trying to sabotage someone's financial desires or what their ideas are. But you're coming into a residential community that has its own character. And you're possibly not from around here and you don't realize and it would just be a huge eyesore. It would also, the noise and who knows how many people would live in these two families. He showed me the size. And it was, I mean, our heart just keeps dropping. So I'm speaking on behalf of number fifty-two. Lori is on the phone and she could share her opinion of what she feels herself.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Parsons.
And I, you should have an email from me as well.
We have-
We were sent today.
Okay, well, I have Ms. Salerno's email and you've spoken, so that's part of the record as well.
Okay.
And is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this?
Hi, I don't know if I'm telling-
You are, Lori.
Okay, Ms. Parsons, can you mute yours? Ms. Parsons, you need to mute. Ms. Salerno?
Yes.
All right, if you'd like to be heard?
Yeah, I, I would, because I'll be honest, my backyard backs up to there as well and I was not even aware of what was gonna be going on until I did speak to Jen. I, I just noticed that they're taking all the rocks down and everything going on, then I was talking to her and you know, I moved into this residential area, you know, quiet, the privacy. And now all of a sudden here, there's just gonna be a couple homes back there, you know, take down the structure that gives me, I believe there's a garage or a shed. I'm not sure what it's used for. Take that down, it's gonna take away from my privacy. It, you know, I was quite caught off guard with that because nobody approached me or talked to me about it when my backyard also backs up to there. So if he went over to one house, why wasn't, you know, the other neighbors included in that? So we would be aware of what's going on, but I definitely don't want a couple more houses built in my backyard.
All right, thank you, Ms. Salerno. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this application?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask for some clarification?
Sure. Let me just see, maybe we see if there's anyone else that wants to speak first. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this application? All right, go ahead.
The neighbors are concerned that two houses are being built, but I don't, it, it's unclear because I'm looking at a single family house on a lot. So what's the second house? Are they formed?
I think the second house is the other house that's on the, the lot next door. He wants to create a building lot here of five thousand square feet instead of it's a six, they required six thousand square feet.
So the second house already exists?
Yeah.
Is that, is that true, Mr. Stoico?
It's, it's- House, I just gonna do remodeling and make a little bit because it's twelve hundred square feet only. It's not, uh, so I building those houses for my family, so I have two kids, but we, I not leave with the, with the wife. And I wanna have kids live with me, so that's what I designed to build the two houses. One, I gonna live in one house and another it's gonna live with the, with the ex-wife, so the kids were old. And that's why, and I checked the regulation. The maximum what I can build, twenty-five hundred square feet with a food and garage. That's why I wanna have garage inside in the house. That's why the neighbors complaining because in existing house, I planning to remove the garage and build into the house.
So it's- There's only one house there, just for to-
Oh, Ms. Parsons, Ms. Parsons, Ms. Parsons, no, no. You're still on mute until I ask for comment.
So yeah, there is existing house and there is a lot next to it. So existing house is existing house. It's already was approved a long time ago, so it was built on a lot.
All right, that answers the question, Mr. Stoico. Jane?
So just to be clear, to be clear, today what we are looking at is an application for a single family house on one lot.
Yes, to make it a lot.
And it's not, is that the plans that are attached to this application, that, that is the house that's going to be built? Is that a condition of this variance?
Yes.
Yeah?
That's the plan what you have, that's, that, that's the plan what's proposed on that empty lot on one oh five May Street.
So-
Jane, it's a, it's a, the only application is for reducing the lot size required from six thousand to five thousand.
Well, that's my question then, is there's a set of drawings attached to the application? Is that a condition of this application or is it just a suggestion?
Make it a condition of this application. We cannot.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's, it's the application for the variance is, is what it is. We can't make a particular type of a building on a lot as a condition to-
I was just asking if it was, not asking for it to be one. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stoico, now I'll allow you to comment on the opposition.
So the first of all, I bought it that house and and they, they talking about my property like it's owned, it's owned by them. So they have opportunity, the house was on the market for half a year.
Mr. Stoico, let me interrupt you for a moment. My suggestion as a chairman is to comment on their opposition to your application of why you should be able to reduce the building lot to build a house on this property. Not anything else, okay? Not to get any personal on it, to just to comment on their opposition. Okay, they have a fair opportunity. They have every right to object to it. And you have every right to present the application, but let's just keep it to the merits of the application as to this particular lot and your request, as to why you think this board should be lenient and reduce the required size from six thousand to five thousand in this neighborhood, okay?
I checked many, I checked many record properties on, on a lot and actually my lot next to it, it was the same reduced down from six to five and they build a house. And I checked in the same area in zone B in, next to it, that it's a lot of houses where, there is a lot of lots were reduced to build on it. It's not only my on that, on that neighborhood. That's why I don't know why I cannot have the same reduced down to build a house on it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any questions on the follow-up rebuttal to Mr. Stoico from the board? Yes, Steph. Unmute.
Oh, I can talk? No, he's, he's unmuted me, or letting, letting me speak now. What is it that you could do without a variance?
Without variance, I have ten thousand square feet, including the existing house. So if I have to do something else, I have to knock house down, existing house down. And by zoning, it's allowed me to build two duplexes, like one duplex. It's because it's required, I think it's nine thousand square feet. But that's basically gonna be one struggle, one big structure and it's gonna be right in front of my neighbors.
So, so, just so I understand, so within the regulations, you could tear down your existing house and build a duplex?
It's required only nine thousand square feet. I have ten thousand square feet.
Okay. So I just, so that's, so that, so I'm just putting it out there. So within the regulations and just so everybody knows, neighbors included, that you could tear down your existing house and build into a duplex?
I explained them, so it's easier, it's better to have two houses separate because you have twenty feet apart. So you have, they separate, so it's not gonna block everything. But if it's gonna be one big structure, it's gonna be basically two houses connecting together. So it's gonna be one big structure and it's gonna be even worse. But I explained the neighbors, but for some reason, they just, they just don't wanna listen to me from the beginning. That's why they object in my, what am I planning to do?
Thank you for, thank you for answering the question. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Daphne. Okay, that closes our hearing on number twelve, one oh five May Street. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Salerno, Ms. Parsons, thank you, Mr. Stoico as well.
Thank you, guys.
Number thirteen, two ninety Sasko Hill Road, map two three one, parcel three nine nine. Petition of Stanley and Elizabeth Morton for a variance of zoning regulations section five point two point four to reduce the street line setback from sixty feet currently thirty-eight point seven feet proposing forty-three point four feet. Permission to remove and rebuild existing garage premises AAA zone. Attorney Fitzpatrick, have you joined us?
I have, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, there you are. Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name's Bill Fitzpatrick. I'm an attorney in Fairfield with the law firm of Fitzpatrick, Frey and Bologna. We have offices at seventeen thirty-five Post Road. I'm here this afternoon representing two ninety S H R Equity Partners LLC. The board will recall that I filed this variance application on behalf of this entity in its capacity as contract purchaser of two ninety Sasko Hill Road, which was then owned by Bud and Elizabeth Morton. Since that time, the Mortons have closed the sale of their property to two ninety S H R Equity Partners LLC. Tom Beez Shabazi is a member of this LLC and the Shabazi family will occupy two ninety Sasko Hill Road as their residence. Two ninety Sasko Hill Road is located in the residence AAA zone, contains one point seven three acres. The intent of the applicant is to renovate the existing garage. The existing garage consists of a three-car garage and a storage area with two bedrooms above. There's also an existing first floor extension of the garage towards Sasko Hill Road, which is the space for the third garage bay. The renovated garage will include a three-car garage on the first floor and an expanded second floor, which will be a fitness area, including a gym, bath, walk-in closet, et cetera. The existing third garage bay extension of the garage towards Sasko Hill Road will be removed. In order to accomplish the proposed garage renovation, the applicant is requesting a variance of section five point two point four of the zoning regulations to permit a reduction in the street line setback from the required sixty feet, presently thirty-eight point seven feet to forty-three point four feet. As you've heard from me in the past, the test for the granting of a variance is set forth in the case of Archibald V. Wadlow, twenty-five Connecticut appellate three seventy-five, a nineteen ninety-one case which states regarding hardship under general statutes, section eight dash six parents, three end parents. The local zoning board may grant a variance where two basic conditions are met. One, the variance is shown not to affect substantially the comprehensive zoning plan. And two, adherence to the strict letter of the zoning regulations is shown to cause unusual hardship unnecessary to the carrying out of the general purpose of the zoning plan, end quote. First prong of the test, no substantial effect on the comprehensive zoning plan is satisfied here with the proposed use of renovation of an existing garage as part of a residential structure is certainly a permitted use in the residence AAA zone. The second part of the test, adherence to the strict letter of the zoning regulations is shown to cause unusual hardship unnecessary to the carrying out of the general purpose of the zoning plan is satisfied here by several factors. First factor for the board to evaluate is the fact this home was constructed per the town assessor's records in nineteen twenty-four. The board can take note of the fact that the town of Fairfield zoning regulations were first adopted on October twenty-sixth, nineteen twenty-five, a year after the construction of this home. As such, the construction of this home and likely the garage preceded the enactment of zoning regulations in Fairfield. This makes this garage a legal pre-existing non-conformity. The renovation of the existing garage, which preceded the enactment of zoning, is a valid legal hardship, particularly when the renovation moves the garage further from the street line in question. The board should also take note of the fact that Connecticut case law, particularly the case of Vine versus zoning board versus zoning board of appeals of the town of North Branford, a two thousand seven Connecticut Supreme Court case confirms that the reduction of a legal non-conformity to a less offensive non-conformity- confirms that the reduction of a legal non-conformity to a less offensive non-conformity constitutes an independent ground for the granting of a variance. This independent ground is in addition to or in lieu of a legal hardship. So in the matter at hand, there are two bona fide bases for approval of this variance request. The first is the fact that the existing garage and home were constructed prior to the institution of zoning, and as such, the replacement of that garage qualifies as a legal hardship. Secondly, there's an independent legal basis for the approval of this variance because of the fact that the proposed garage renovation involves no variance request other than the street setback. And in the case of the street setback proposed, it is an increase in the street line setback which is proposed. As such, approval of this variance request makes this property more conforming. This is a separate valid legal basis for the approval of this request. It's also relevant for the board to note that this proposal does not constitute an overbuilding of this property. The property with the garage renovation completed is still fully compliant with the relevant coverage and floor area ratio. After the construction is complete, the coverage on site will be seven point eight percent when the zoning regulations for the residence triple A zone permit a coverage of ten percent. Similarly, after construction is complete, the floor area ratio will be thirteen point seven percent when the permitted floor area ratio in the residence triple A zone is fifteen percent. My clients, as new purchasers of the property, have met with their neighbors, and I have submitted to the zoning department signatures from the three possibly affected property owners on either side and across the street, and they have confirmed that the neighbors have no objection to this variance proposal. Uh, for the reasons I've outlined, I request this application be approved. Approval of this request permits the updating of the garage portion of this home while reducing the legally pre-existing non-conformity. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Kambe Zee is here on this call with me. I believe the architect has left the call, uh, but certainly Mr. Shabazi and I would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Fitzpatrick. Does the board have any questions for Attorney Fitzpatrick, or Mr. Shabazi? Do you see that he's on the line? All right. No questions? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this particular matter? It's two ninety Sasko Hill Road. There are no further comment. We're gonna close the hearing at two ninety Sasko Hill Road. Thank you, Attorney Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our next item is number fourteen, and that is eighteen oh six Burr Street, map one five three, parcel twenty B is in Boyd, petition of Jay Kevin and Molly Johnson for a variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point four to reduce the street line setback from sixty feet, currently fifty-three point four feet, proposing fifty point four feet. Permission to construct a second-floor addition premises, triple A zone. Attorney Fallon, this is.
It is, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. Can you see me and hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm pleased to be representing, uh, Jay and Molly Johnson, who are not only clients but neighbors. We live right next door, uh, abutting the Johnson property uh, at our home at one hundred Woodhouse Road. The Johnsons have been our neighbors and resided in the house since two thousand and six. They live there with their three, uh, young children, and, uh, they seek approval to construct, as you've seen from the architectural plans, a second-story addition over an existing first floor uh, that will allow them, uh, to have an additional, much-needed one-bedroom and two baths. With three young children in the family, this additional space is, is more than a luxury. The actual family room, uh, over which this addition will be built, was built in nineteen eighty-seven. And, uh, the variance that we seek is the variance as referenced in the call to the street setback. By way of background, uh, the original first-floor addition was constructed by a prior owner, as I said, thirty-four years ago. And apparently, Mr. Decker and I and the Johnsons have determined that somehow when that addition was built, it was built and did receive a C O, uh, non-conform, although it was actually non-conforming to the street setback fronting on Woodhouse Road at that time. Nonetheless, as the board is aware pursuant to Connecticut general statutes eight dash thirteen A, because it's been there, uh, for more than three years, it is now, uh, considered to be legitimized, at least for purposes of that setback. So with that as the background, the property is located in the triple A zone, and in my material, I set forth the standards that you need to look at with regard to a variance that pursuant to Connecticut general statutes ATS six A three. Uh, the first thing you have to determine is that what we are doing will not substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan. Uh, I cite in my material, uh, the Egan case that stands for the proposition that if the use to be made of the property uh, is one that is permitted in the zone, then that part of the test is satisfied. Here, in fact, uh, there will be no change in use of the property. It will continue to be used as a single-family residence for the Johnson family. Uh, in addition to providing the much-needed additional space, the Johnsons have taken great care working with their architect, Lee Overland, uh, to design a, uh, an addition over the first floor, which is attractive in, in design, uh, certainly harmonizes with the character of their existing lovely home, and will have a positive impact on the neighborhood. I did submit, relative to this hearing today, uh, petition, uh, signed by, uh, the adjacent neighbors, including my wife, and, uh, we're pleased to support the application. I'd also point out again that the application is certainly one that is not seeking any aspect of overconstruction. The additional square footage is modest, and the F A R after the addition is built, floor area ratio will still be less than half of what is allowed in the zone, which is fifteen percent. By way of the hardship, as, as my material indicates, there are two, uh, separate bases for hardship in this particular case. Uh, the first one is, as I said, this particular, um, addition was constructed by the owner thirty-four years ago, and its present location is and has been non-conforming to the street setback. It is the fact, but it is protected and legitimized by Connecticut general statutes eight dash thirteen A. It is the fact of the location of the existing, um, first floor and our desire to substantially go up using the same foundation that occasions and triggers the need for the variance that, that is being requested. And I cited my case law material, uh, that says that the law has recognized previously at the top of page three of my narrative, in numerous cases, that hardship for the granting of a variance can and does arise out of the existing location of a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The other basis for the granting of the variance is the classic one, and that is this is a corner lot. It's a lot that is subject to the street setback requirements, uh, both on the Woodhouse roadside and the Burr Street side. And again, the law is clear there that for purposes of granting a street setback variance, hardship is established when a lot is in fact such a corner lot, and therefore subject to the application of street setback requirements on both sides. So by way of summary, uh, the Johnsons, uh, are great neighbors. They seek approval of this technical variance so they can add a much-needed and fairly modest but very attractive second floor over that addition, that existing family room addition. I think, and I hope you will agree, that the application, uh, on the circumstances they're under do meet the requirements of section eight dash six A three, in that there certainly will be no adverse impact relative to the comprehensive plan, and that there are two factors relating to both the location of the existing pre-existing non-conforming structure, and the fact that this is a corner lot that satisfies the hardship requirement, uh, based upon the case law. So we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have, uh, but we'd hope you would favorably consider this.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Is there any questions from the board? Having no questions? Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this application, either in favor or opposed? Hearing, no further comment. We're gonna close the hearing on eighteen zero six Burr Street. Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Uh, this concludes the public hearing. Um, we are gonna take a, a five-minute break, uh, the board members, and we'll reconvene at three fifty-six, uh, to, uh, and, uh, talk about these matters. Katie, Terry, Daphne. Okay, perfect. Okay. All right, uh, let's, uh, sorry, it's a little late. Let's reconvene, uh, zoning board of appeals, June three, two thousand twenty-one, reconvening our working session. Uh, let's just have, you know, only everyone else mute except for our board members, so we can, uh, do this efficiently. And again, reminder to the board members, uh, please give your name when you're saying, uh, yes, you move, and give your name when you second. Uh, so, uh, on our agenda, the continued docket number two has been continued. Uh, general docket, it's our first piece of business today. Uh, this is number one, one fifty-eight Fairview Avenue. Mr. Serone, uh, presented this application. It's to legitimize the deck constructed by a previous owner. Entertain a motion to approve?
Daphne.
Thank you, Daphne moves. Okay, is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Thanks, Jane. All right, uh, discussion? What's that?
I think it's reasonable.
Good-sized lot, and it really doesn't affect the, the, the people. It's not a big overhanging deck. It's a three and a half, four-foot-high deck, so, you know, it's nice.
And it's only one point three percent bigger than it should be, so big deal.
All right, let's bring it to a vote. Now, we're gonna go in the order that you appear at my screen, so I'm gonna maintain that order. Uh, and that, the order then is Jane, Daphne, Katie, Terry. Uh, so Jane, what's your vote?
Yes.
Daphne?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And I say yes, that passes? Granted, I mean, I should say. Uh, number two, sixty-one Harvester Road. Uh, Dafino, uh, application, and this is to legitimize a shed.
Yep.
Also had a neighbor speaking in favor of it. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Katie has moved. Okay, is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Jane seconds. All right, discussion?
Um, if we, if we are looking at hardship and cost to move things is not considered a legal hardship for us, I don't see any other hardship. Does anybody else have another opinion?
I mean, it's a small, the smaller lot. The owner does not mind next door, which is this particular issue. It's twenty thousand is the minimum. Um, he's supposed to have, he's supposed to have fifteen, he has, supposed to have twenty, he only has fifteen thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, so, you know, although he can articulate a hardship, uh, under required lot size for a shed on, on the edge of the property, uh, can constitute hardship. He didn't articulate it. I mean, he, I think he talked about, you know, the fact that he has some power running to it, uh, and it would be expensive, but, uh, he does have the undersized lot. Five thousand square feet extra space, lot more room to put a shed in. All right, bring it to a vote, Jane.
I'm gonna say no.
Daphne?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. That's granted. Number three, two ninety-four Colony Street. Petition of the child's instructing two-car garage and race patio.
Yeah.
Okay. We might need, okay, yep, all right, that's better. Okay. And, uh, let's entertain motion to approve on two ninety-four Colony Street.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Jane. Is there a second? Okay, second, thank you. All right, discussion?
They're only asking for an empty lot coverage of three percent, eight, three point four percent.
It's not the percentage so much, it's the, um, proximity to the property line and doing construction so close to the property line.
Well, you know, and they could, they could do a one-car garage.
Or they could slide over the two-car garage and just have a smaller patio.
They have options.
Yeah.
Did anybody object? Any of the neighbors object? Isn't our petition every signed?
No, there's no, no objection. It's a corner lot. Uh, and the topography, which that create, that, that, the topography creates the lot coverage because the lot covered that race patio is kind of to the, Jane, I think your questions on that pointed out, uh, that once you get over that foot, you, you include it. So that, that's the lot coverage issue. Um,
But the setback, there's no, there's no there's no reason why they can't conform to setbacks.
Right. There's more they could do to conform. You know, I'm just, I'm inclined to vote no, just because I think that there's more that they could do.
What are their chances for them to do?
Uh, cut the garage in half.
Or slide closer to the house and have a smaller patio, excuse me, a smaller patio there. They, they do have another whole section of the yard that has a slate area, so.
Well, here's my question. If there is, if there is a hardship demonstrated, and the neighbors are all fine with it, and no one's objected, why would we, why would we tell them we don't care? We don't care if you guys don't care?
Well, in zoning board of appeals, my thought always has been that we're um, supposed to uphold the zoning regulations, um, as, as much as possible, and that people should, you know, um, really have a hardship or try their best to conform to the zoning regulations. So if there's other options where people can conform, you know, they should. Don't want everybody to just be able to do what they want and just think it's okay to, to get a variance. Maybe that's because their neighbors didn't disapprove, you know? I mean, I think, I think that these variances are, I think we really should look at them, um, carefully, because I think um, we have these zoning regulations in place for a reason, and variances should be considered varied. Yeah, they're pretty serious issues.
We've also done the flip side where all the neighbors objected. We've said yes. So, you know, it's, it's, it's our decision.
Yeah. You know, I said, just, I, I totally understand, and I agree with what Daphne's saying. Yeah, that's our charter to oppose the zoning rules. Said, for the fact, you know, we've got the neighbors, we've got the hardship. It's pretty small percentage. It's three point four percent. I mean, it's not like they're, they're asking like ten percent. Personally, I would find that more fashionable. You know, still allow these people to have a two-car version of one-car garage, just for three percent.
It's not just the three percent. It's five feet closer to the property line than is permitted.
All right, well, let's bring it to a vote, Jane.
No.
Daphne? Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. Unfortunately, that is not. Number four, forty-six Baldwin Paris. Uh, petition of, uh, Gutridge, but the prospective buyer, Valzone, uh, presented the application along with, uh, Mr. Serone. Uh, it's to construct a FEMA-compliant single-family dwelling. Entertain a motion to approve? Thank you, Daphne. Is there a second?
Looks like Terry's seconding, seconding.
Sorry, thank you. Thanks, Terry. All right, discussion?
So I'll start. So when there's new, I'm just always inclined that it's done in compliance with the zoning regulations. So I'm inclined to buy and to vote no, just because I really think that people should, if it's new, they should start out. if it's new, they should start out, you know, complying.
It is particularly hard to do that in the beach area, especially when you have a 6,000, I mean, this is not the beach district, but it's the A-zone, but when you have 6,000 square feet and you need to make it PMA compliant, makes it near impossible to do that.
I think you can get a lot closer to it, if you comply with the coverage and FAR regulations, I understand setbacks, because lots are oddly shaped and there's roads in weird places, but the FAR is very important, I think it's the most important section of the zoning regulations, because it talks about bulk, and the whole purpose is to prevent these oversized houses on small lots. And, you know, the effect that you get is what you see up and down the streets, down there, where you have these canyons of big, tall, overly sized houses, so I think, as Daphne said, this is a new house, you can design it to be closer, at least in compliance, it doesn't have to be that big.
Oh, the, 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 the height is a function of being, starting at 10 feet.
I'm not talking about height, I'm talking about coverage and.
Well, it's in the tall building canyon, so, that's.
Yeah, but the, yeah, it's FAR, it's, you know, do you really need that? That half of the current coverage right now?
So I don't know, what's the current coverage right now? So.
We don't, we don't have a current coverage, I don't have that in front of me, I'm just looking at the call.
I'm looking at vision, okay, I'm just, I'm just curious, I asked that question previously. Is the footprint, how much, how different is the footprint they're looking for versus what's there now? And looking at vision, it looks like compare with you.
Mr. Chairman, I have that number if you need it.
Yeah, thanks for just to clarification, thanks.
The existing footprint is 21.92%. Which is
10% less.
It's about 1,260, and then proposed is 26.54%.
Right.
Right, so it's a, it's a 5% difference, or it's if they're asking for 5% more than the current structure.
But they're also, but the FAR is doubling.
Right.
Almost doubling. It's, well, not doubling, it's going from 27, yes, it's doubling, from what they have now.
Well, that's because it's going from a split level, which is a very unpopular style of home, to a standard colonial.
Right, but they could go up to 40% and still be, and that would be compliant, they don't, it's just that it goes above and beyond what's allowed in FAR. I mean, zoning's design, and, you know, we, we're ending up with these oversized houses that are just too big for the lot, too bulky. So that's what I'm objecting to.
And we do it one at a time, so then there's this cumulative effect.
If, I mean, if you bend that neighborhood, that's kind of the nature of the neighborhood.
I, I know you can't put the toothpaste back in the tube, but you could slow it down.
It hasn't affected the property values.
That's not my concern.
Just pointing out.
All right, bring it to a vote, Jane?
No.
Daphne? Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Yes, from Kevin. That motion, a request has been denied. Number five, 115 Tuckahoe Lane. Petition of the Darts, it's to construct a second floor dormer. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you Jane. Discussion?
It's, it's not increasing any of the nonconformance.
Yeah.
It's staying exactly the same.
All right, bring it to a vote, Jane?
Yes.
Daphne?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Say yes. That's granted. Number six, 158 Robin Lane, petition of new beginning properties to construct an 10 inch one story garage, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Daphne, second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you. Discussion? Remember, this is the one, they had the two, two garages down below the house, you know, they're probably like six and a half feet tall, and then they wanted to put the the, the larger garage over onto the left side of the house.
Yeah.
So I think that was, you know, I asked if there was a hardship, and I just, maybe, I just didn't see one, hear one.
Right.
Other than the current garages like those are not really usable.
Right, but they're asking for a one car garage, and 22 feet wide is not a one car garage. It could be smaller.
All right, bring it to a vote, Jane?
No.
Daphne?
No.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. That's been denied. Number seven, 401 Oldfield Road, petition of the Lanys. It's gonna construct an exterior staircase with landing, entertain a motion to approve? Thank you. You're unrolled, Daphne, keep it up. Second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you. All right, discussion? This is the staircase to the back of the garage.
Right. So I understand it's inconvenient, but I don't see that as a hardship. And there's alternative locations to put the stair so that it's not so close to the neighbor, because that involves, when you're that close, you're, you're doing excavation, that's gonna impact the neighbor. And then you can never get around that side of the garage, so there's alternatives to this.
I mean, I didn't think putting a staircase, we allow a lot of variances for setbacks, especially for staircases. I don't think it's unreasonable, especially on that gable end, to have the staircase come in that side, as opposed to coming in through a dormer. I mean, it's not, it's just not as unreasonable, we allow staircases all the time.
I agree.
Any other comment? All right, bring it to a vote, Jane?
No.
Daphne?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes, that's been granted. Number eight, 241 Catherine Paris. Petition of the Allens and Mr. Heath also helped on presentation to construct an open front porch, entertain a motion to approve? Thank you, Daphne, is there a second? Thank you, Katie. Discussion? Remember, this is the one moving, moving that porch that's in their driveway over to the front. And they need a little bit more, because they need the extra two feet to allow them to go into where we allow front porches to go, a little bit more. And it's just a front entryway, it's not make sense, it looks nice.
It's a lot safer.
That's true. All right, bring it to a vote, Jane?
Yes.
Daphne?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes, that's granted. Next one is number nine, 119 Melanie Lane. Attorney Russo presented this, and it's for the legitimize the above ground pool. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Terry, Daphne, your phone?
I want to share.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? This is the one that has the wraparound road. Melanie Court wraps around and has the turnaround, so you have three different street side setbacks on one side of, on two sides of a property. So they have four street side setbacks to this property.
Right.
Now, if that's isn't a hardship, I should retire from zoning board of appeals.
Right. That and above ground pools are temporary, they, they don't last very long.
All right, bring it to a vote, Jane?
Yes.
Daphne?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes, you haven't got a laugh out of Mr. Decker on that one. That's granted. Number 10, 1020 Old Post Road, Attorney Russo presented this as well. It's for Mr. Hill. Second floor addition, you know, a garage replacing the garage in the second floor addition. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Terry, is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane, okay, discussion?
So I don't, I didn't understand what the hardship was.
Right. There is none.
When you have an existing structure and you wanna, I mean, they want to increase it, so now they have to, they need the setback, I mean, to go over the 15 feet. Because it's going to 18 feet. So, no different than the other things, we have an existing structure, we gotta go up, we need a, a variance for the second floor. So the question really, and that's, you know, the, the call, I think, is the way that, the I think the way our department presented it is that the variance really is for that second floor. Because that's how the call, construct the second floor, they're gonna, they're replacing the first floor with new wood, but the variance, they need the variance for that second half of it.
Right.
Yeah, when it was, when it was presented, it's, it's, they have to spend so much time talking about the existing, the existing structure, not so much time talking about the the second floor.
Well, that's, I think, that's the way you would present it, if I'm presenting, if any of the lawyers that present, when they have going straight up, they say, that's where the existing structure is, and I want to be on top of it.
Once they, the existing structure is not gonna exist, once they start, because it's being removed. And if they're looking for privacy, you would think they'd want to put a building farther from the property line, not leave it as close as it is, and there's nothing preventing them from moving it.
Right.
The building is a privacy means.
Didn't, didn't we do 58 Oldfield around the corner?
What's that?
58 Oldfield Road. We did it, we granted, I mean, now we don't have precedent on this board, but we granted the, I'm going on tape memory here.
But that was, wasn't that leaving the existing first floor and just building on top of it? Or was it a brand new structure?
I don't remember the answer.
I believe that.
This is a huge lot, I mean, there's plenty of room, it's not.
Right, right, they could, if, if the, so what he was talking really about, as I recall, is a lot about this dilapidated garage, so they can just rebuild the garage, not need a variance, and then if they, if they, it sounds like then they want this other office space, and they can go and do that. But.
Well, it makes sense to leave the garage where the driveway leads to it, and instead of having a
Absolutely, absolutely, they can re, they can rebuild the garage without a variance.
Yeah, and they're seeking to build the not even a full second floor, but an area above it. I don't think it's unreasonable, it's not interfering with any, any neighbors, and they're extending the height of this building.
Yeah, but 1.3 feet is awfully close to property, you can't even walk. I think that you should be able to walk around the perimeter of your property without running into buildings and stairs, and, you know, for a safety issue. At the very least.
Question though, if they, I totally understand your objection, Jane, to being ran the property line, because that is super close. If they opted to do one story, it would have that same so, the exact same proximity to property line, right? Am I correct in that?
They wouldn't be coming before the board.
Correct, I'm saying, if they did, but I'm just, is that my correct in that, that if they decided to rebuild one story, they'd still be the only ones like, put off the property line, right? Correct? Really just talking about you know, second story.
A second, second story in that same area, not even a full 18 feet to the center line. Of, you know, it's, because it's three feet above 15, which is the cutoff. And backing up to a lot apartment.
Can I, can I ask a general question of Mr. Decker?
Sure, sure.
Can you, th- they share a driveway now? Is that permitted, if it was new construction, to share a driveway across a property line?
We don't regulate driveways, so if they shared a driveway, that is what it is, my, my guess, when somebody cares, they have to build a new one, they move the driveway.
Property right, it's a property easement, you, you share a driveway, it's in your deed that you're allowed, and you have an easement. One property has an easement over the other property, and Mr. Hill has an easement over the property, the Kennedy Center property. So they each have an easement to use that driveway. And sometimes in the easement language, there will be something about the maintenance, as to one of the questions. But usually, it's a shared maintenance, especially when you have a line that goes almost smack dab in the center of the driveway. You know, they have some type of agreement, they probably hire someone, but that's, that's a property right. It's not a
That's correct.
It's not a code issue, it's not a building issue, it's a property right issue.
Just curious, thank you.
Well, and this still has to get passed by the historic district, you know, so, that's
True. All right, bring it to a vote, Jane?
No.
Daphne?
Oh, yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes, that's granted. Number 11, 354 Villa Avenue, this Lee presented this, it's to enclose the, oh, Mr. Lee, sorry. Close the open landing. And it's a sideline setback, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Daphne, second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion? Discussion on
A preexisting, nonconforming lot. Right?
Yep.
So that's a hardship by itself. So.
Yeah, I mean, and your, your question is well taken, they got in, they have to go to the, make sure they comply with the building codes, the building department. But we're only talking about how close it is, not whether they need a landing, or whether they can.
Right, so from a design point of view, it makes no sense to me. And from a hardship point of view, their personal need for a second bathroom is irrelevant, the fact is, it's a nonconforming lot, so I have to say yes.
Well, just my, my fraternity house did have a, the fire escape went through both bathrooms, the only two bathrooms in my fraternity house. Fire escape entrance went through each of those bathrooms, so.
Was there a lock on the door?
Was there somebody from the fraternity in the fire department?
No, State of Connecticut approved it, it was UConn, University of Connecticut, it was approved by the building department.
Just a joke, just a joke.
Yeah, but Kevin, was there a lock on the door, or was it?
Of course there was a lock, of course.
Okay, so it was just a, well, I don't know if it was multiple use or what. Anyway, so I'm saying yes.
All right, Daphne?
Yes.
Katie? Terry?
Yes.
Yes, me, that's granted. Number 12, 105 May Street. Petition of Mr. Stoyko, this is to create a building lot. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Daphne, second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion, and remember, we had people that were opposing this, including an email, an anonymous email, was a neighbor though. Ms. Parsons and Ms. Salerno opposed that, and Mr. Stoyko spoke to that as well, responded. So let's have some discussion about this.
So he tossed this three months ago knowing that he could not build on the lot.
No, you didn't miss anything.
Yeah.
No, he can build on the lot. He can build a duplex.
That's right.
And he can, he can knock down his house and do a duplex.
Yes, and he does not need a variance for that.
And Daphne and Jane had brought up, you know, careful what you wish for. I'm just going on the records, making sure I understand this.
I did. I brought it up.
That's true.
So, I mean, I appreciate the people commenting and it's a to question of what do we want to do as a board on this issue of allowing this request? I mean, there, you know, I've been on for 12 years. This issue has come up at least 25 to 30 times. Where we have a lot of these lots, they were originally designed as 5,000 square-foot lots. People bought two of them next to each other. Sometimes they put a house in the middle, but usually just to try to make sure they put a house on one lot and they use the lot next door, you know, for the future. And you know, it's not precedent, but what do we want to do on this particular lot? We have neighbors that don't want anything there. Don't want it to be cleared, don't want anything. But we have a person that wants to put a under 2,500 square-foot home. Not seeking any variances for the particular home. If he wanted to, if he changed his mind, he'd have to come back to us to get any type to do something that's not conforming to a 5,000 square-foot lot. You know, and he asked for a street-line setback, so you know, that's.
No, what's street-line setback?
Oh, no, street-line, 50 to 60. He didn't ask for a street-line setback either, so flopping it into where he's supposed to.
Right.
Assuming 5,000.
Well, you know, I didn't hear a hardship and it's, it seems to be kind of counterintuitive to the neighborhood. So we're not, we're not, we're not, you know, we're not talking about what he could do. We're talking about what's in front of us. So I'm, I'm really inclined to vote no on this because it doesn't seem like it's in you know, what the neighborhood wants and there's no hardship that I see.
Well, as to the hardship, these lots were all designed when it was 5,000 square foot. So, you know, that's, that's the problem. Everyone I live in, they, they had a different, they changed the zoning in my house, which is, you know, much less than the required. All of a sudden became non-conforming. Because when it was originally designed, my neighborhood lied out. And luckily, when I needed a variance before I was on the board, that I had a board that was understanding that those changes can create hardship.
Right. I, I think what he's asking for is no greater than what his neighbors already have. So he's not trying to overbuild or outbuild them. He just, it sounds like the house that he's planning is similar to all the other houses in the neighborhood. And I know it looks like a mess now. But when all the rocks are gone, it'll fit right in.
All right, any other comments? All right, bring it up, Jane?
Yes.
Daphne?
No.
Katie? What's that? Okay, yes, Terry?
Yes.
Yes. I say yes. That's granted. Number 13, 290 Sasko Hill Road. It's the Morton's. Attorney Fitzpatrick presented this to remove and rebuild existing garage. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Daphne. Second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. All right, discussion? I mean.
It's reducing the non-conformity, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Bring it to a vote, Jane?
Yes.
Daphne?
Yes.
Terry? Katie?
Sorry.
Tiffany? Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes, that's granted. Number 14, 1806 Burr Street, petition of the Johnsons. Attorney Fallon presented this to construct second-floor addition. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Giving that to Daphne? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. All right, discussion? I mean, we're within it and this is the building above and, you know, same, same concept we had on the concept, we had garage. And luckily, the lawyer bribed one of the neighbors to sign off on it. All right, bring it to a vote. Jane?
Yes.
Daphne?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes, that's granted. And obviously Attorney Fallon knows I'm joking as the chairman. Does he would never do that? All right, this concludes our hearing. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I, I know as much as we do this, it's always hard, hard and continues to be hard to have a smooth meeting through this technology. Hopefully, we'll be in person soon. Fingers crossed.
I think you're doing a pretty good job.
Yeah, you're doing great, Kevin.
Thanks, but it's it's, my staff hears me yelling, so they think that.
And thanks, Josephine, and thanks, Matt.
You're welcome. Everybody have a great month. See you in July.
Bye.
Bye.
Board members.
Bye.